To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have the budget update presentation from Mrs. May.
Okay, so this is the second budget session for the 2526 budget development process. So this presentation will focus on the tax cap calculation as well as a review of revenue. So we're going to start with the tax cap and tax levy historical trends and then focus on the tax cap calculation for the 2526 school year. And then roll into the state aid, which is comprised of the executive governor's proposal. And then look at the overall revenue review for the budget and then closing on what the current budget gap is. So if we look at the property tax cap since the inception of the tax cap legislation, which went into effect in the 2012, 2013 school year. If we look at the gray line, that's what the tax cap levy limit was in a current, in any current school year. And then the red line is the actual adopted tax levy increase. So as you can see, the district has always stayed either at the tax cap or below since the inception. Most notably, you'll notice that in 2014, 15 through the 1819 school year, the school district always raised levy or raised the tax, raised tax levy to the tax cap. Another thing to point out is in 2324, you can see that that gray line or what the tax cap is in that current school year was 7.5%. And the district stayed well below that at 2%, with 2% kind of being the constant the last three years. So if we look at the difference between the tax, what the tax levy would have been if we'd went to the cap since the inception of the tax cap legislation in 2012, 2013 versus what the actual tax levy was in a given school year, and then the difference between the two. And as you can see, each year, it kind of accumulates and the cumulative amount by not raising to the tax cap is 1.9 million. So what that means is that the Board of Education has made a strategic move to keep 1.9 million in our taxpayers' pockets by not raising the tax levy to the cap. So if we look at this a little bit differently and look at the tax levy as a percentage of the overall budget, so this, this graph kind of goes all the way back to 2006, 2007. But if we focus on the yellow highlights, which is where the tax cap legislation went into effect in 2012, 2013, you can see that the tax levy was about 50% of our overall revenue budget. And that amount has decreased since the tax cap legislation to about 42.64% in the current year budget. So what that means is that our local share or what our taxpayers are paying for our budget each year has decreased year over year. So it means that our state aid is either has need to pick up the difference or other miscellaneous revenue or what we're appropriating in fund balance or reserves is picking up the more of the proportion of our tab, our budget. So we'll kind of go into more of the revenue sides later, but. So now if we look at the property tax cap calculation for 2526. So I know we had talked about this last budget session about the property tax cap calculation starts at either the lower or the lesser of 2% or CPI. Since CPI has been trending greater than 2%, at 2.95% for the current year, we are at that 2%. So starting at 2%, then you add on the growth factor in the tax base, which is 0008. So you get 2.08%. And then you add on any exclusions. So our exclusions for our capital tax levy, so this includes our tap, our capital expenditures, so what we owe on debt from prior capital projects, so principal and interest payments, plus any capital expenditures for a BOSI's capital, minus any building aid that we're receiving on any of those expenditures. So the difference is essentially your local share or what your local taxpayers are paying for capital projects. That is your capital levy exclusion. You would also have exclusions for ERS or TRS. So in the prior year, we did have one where the employer contribution for either our employee retirement system or our teacher retirement system for our current employees had increased by 2% or more. So there was an exclusion there. This year, we do not. The only exclusion we have is the capital levy exclusion. So all in all, our tax cap calculation for 2526 is 2.58%, which is about $415,000 increase in our tax levy that we could go up to. So if we look at our state aid revenue, so we did receive the governor's executive proposal in January. And the most notable difference that you'll see from the November state aid run that we had talked about on the last budget session is the increase in foundation aid. We did receive a 5% or about $450,000 increase in foundation aid, which was very exciting to see. So the governor did include some of the recommendations from the Rockefeller Institute report that was released in December. So most notably, those changes were to replace census data that was based on, from 2000, that was the most recent that there was using in the previous foundation aid formula. That was updated to include small area income estimates. So some poverty data, which increased our pupils in those poverty thresholds by about 50%. So that had a pretty significant increase. Second, it replaced the free and reduced price lunch application amounts, or what's called FERPLE, with economically disadvantaged numbers. So that had an increase of about 115% in our pupils with economically disadvantaged. And why that's so important is with the introduction of community eligibility provision or our students receiving a free breakfast and a free lunch, there was not as much of an advantage to fill out those free and reduced lunch applications. So it could have affected our state aid, but by using a different metric in the foundation aid formula, it did have a good effect on our foundation aid. So everything else on this slide kind of remains unchanged from the last budget session or what was reported from the November state aid runs. The one thing I did want to point out again is the building aid increase of about 1.2 million is kind of already spoken for. I know we had talked about that that was related to deferred building aid that the district was receiving, but we also have an increase in the 2526 debt payment of about the same amount. So that money is already going to be allocated to that increase in debt payment. So some of the things that were not just budgeted state aid that was included in the executive proposal, as well as some things that we were hoping to see included but weren't. So distraction-free learning, this is kind of talked about as the cellphone ban. So that did mandate in the executive proposal that local policy be established by August of 2025. Dual enrollment, so this did expand opportunities for school districts to partner with higher ed institutions so that students could receive college credit while still enrolled in high school. So that was included in her proposal. And then as well as the universal school meals, so expanding that program to all districts statewide, again, did not have an effect on Eden since we are already community eligible. Some of the things that we were hoping to see in the executive proposal but did not, were not included, were prior year adjustments. So this one's kind of interesting because if a, if a school district at any point is determined that they were overpaid in some of their state aid, the state will immediately pull back that difference from the next state aid payment. If a district is underpaid state aid, it goes into what's called a prior year adjustment queue. That queue is currently about $300 million statewide and is distributed on a first come, first served basis, but that has not been funded since the pandemic. So school districts are kind of getting added to the queue with really no understanding of when they may receive those payments that they're due. Again, not, that was not included in the executive proposal. The other thing we were hoping to see was a change to the zero miss, zero emission bus implementation. So right now, all school districts, any bus purchases beyond 2027 should be zero miss, have to be zero emission, and the entire fleet has to be converted by 2035. There were no changes in the executive proposal regarding that. Second, or thirdly, an increase in the BOSI CTE reimbursement rate. So school districts receive BOSI's aid on expenditures related to BOSI's spending that some of the instructor costs or have been capped at 30,000. So that amount has not changed since 1992. And then lastly, an increase in the capital outlay expenditure. So currently, capital outlays are capped at $100,000, in which a project must be completed in one fiscal year and the district receives aid on that in the following fiscal year. That's different than a capital project where we would receive the aid over 15 years. Unfortunately, with $100,000, there's not a whole ton of construction that can get done with that amount of money. So again, hoping to see an increase there, it did not increase for 2526. So if we look at other revenue, so other tax items and other revenue other than state aid and our tax levy. So the first one is our pilot payments. So what a pilot payment is, is a payment in lieu of tax. So for Eden, that mean, that is our, some of the solar projects that are located in our community, that they pay the district outside of the tax rolls and the district receives revenue. So while we were anticipating about 25,000 in the current school year that we had budgeted for, we're only anticipating about 500. But next year, we will anticipate 25,000 again. Interest and penalties. So this is interest and penalties that are paid by taxpayers who do not pay their tax bills on time. So keeping that relatively consistent at 13,500. Erie County sales tax, so sales tax payments are in, have a direct tie to consumer spending. So we have seen consumer spending slowly start to dip, especially with everything costing so much. It was pretty timely. The Office of the State Comptroller actually released a report this week regarding sales tax and how they've seen sales tax in the current year has grown at this, at the slowest rate since the pandemic. So we want to kind of try to budget conservatively there, knowing that we may, we may see a small decrease in this sales tax revenue that's generated for next school year. Charges to students and community. So this is our fitness center, driver education, the early morning, morning program. So again, keeping this relatively consistent, increasing it a small amount to account for what's our actual expenditures or our actual revenue has been in the last couple of years. Charges to other districts. So this portion is related to the tuition that we would receive from students, from special ed students that reside in other districts around, you know, the Western New York community, but attend our Eden program. So we bill for those students. It is a pretty significant cost per student. Currently, we have six students that we are billing for. We are anticipating that to drop down to four students, either related to students and having needs that are outpacing what Eden can provide them or someone that's aging out. So we are anticipating a decrease in that area. Interest and investment. So this one's pretty interesting. If you look all the way back to the 2021, 2022 school year, you'll see that interest was only 5,000 for the full school year. We've seen interest rates post pandemic really skyrocket. So if you look at the 2324 year amount, it was all the way up to 700,000. We are starting to see that those interest rates are coming down. So for example, in November of 2023, when it was kind of the height of interest rates, we, it was at 5.3%. January of 2025, it was already down to 4.2 and it has ever, it's decreasing essentially every month. So again, we kind of want to right-size this budget conservatively, knowing that those interest rates are going to come down and we don't want to budget too much, knowing that it could be $5,000 in the school year. Miscellaneous revenue. So this one is kind of the category that can vary greatly year to year, kind of is the catch-all of revenue. So it includes use of facilities, which has been zero for the current school year. Insurance recoveries, which we obviously don't want to plan to receive insurance recovery revenue in any given year. Refund of prior year expense, sale of equipment, which varies greatly year to year. So in the prior school year, it, we received about $100,000 in sale of equipment revenue. Two years prior, it was only 7,000. So again, we want to budget conservatively, knowing that the miscellaneous revenue amount can really vary year to year. And then lastly, our inter-fund transfer. So the only time an inter-fund transfer would be a revenue on the general fund side would be if we had bonded for a capital project and our expenditures for that capital project came in well under our, our, what we bonded or what the revenue we received to pay for that capital project. So that difference would have to be transferred into the general fund as an inter-fund transfer, and it would be kind of earmarked for what, what's called debt service reserve to offset future debt service payments. We had budgeted about 300,000 for the 2425 school year. We anticipate to not have anything because we didn't have any excess bonded revenue over expenditures from the last capital project. So again, continuing that to zero for the 2526 school year. So if we look at estimated revenue overall, I talked about state aid, the 1.5 million. However, 1.2 of that is actually tied up in the deferred building aid or the payment for the debt service payment for next school year. Federal aid, no change there. Property taxes, while it's showing zero, we obviously know that there's a property tax levy. This is just saying because we haven't really talked about what the board is comfortable raising taxes for next school year. So at this point, kind of left that off the table. Other tax items, your pilot payments, your payment in lieu of tax, as well as those interest and penalties. We talked about sales tax, miscellaneous revenue and inter-fund transfers. So really, the last two pieces of our revenue side of the budget are appropriated fund balance and our reserves. So our appropriated fund balance is a little bit confusing. So what this amount is, is it's amount that the district is tying up, or we're saying we're gonna use current funds or savings accounts to pay for the current year budget. Any amount that's over what's called an unappropriated fund balance, so your unappropriated fund balance is money that's not set aside for a specific purpose like a reserve, but essentially can be used for anything if the district were to need to pull from that that they overspent. Our unappropriated fund balance is limited to 4% of the current year budget. So for this year, it's 1.5 million. Any amount of in your, in your appropriated fund balance that's over your unappropriated, so here would be the difference between the 3 million and the 1.5. You're essentially saying if we fully spend our $37 million budget, we're pulling an additional 1.6 from our reserves. Because our appropriated fund balance is using the unappropriated plus additional reserves. So why that's so important is once you spend a reserve, that money is depleted and cannot be touched again. So we just want to be conservative in what we're planning to use in both the appropriated fund balance, which should be closer to the unappropriated fund balance amount, plus the reserve usage for the next school year. It's kind of the doom and gloom slide. If you look at the budget gap as it currently stands with revenue that we looked at on the previous slides versus what our expend, our proposed expenditures are for the 2526 school year, you'll see that we have about a $5 million budget gap if we do not increase taxes at all. This includes both the rollover of wages and benefits that we had talked about on the last budget presentation, but also we had all of our district administrator meetings, so with our building level administrators and our department administrators on all of their asks for 2526. So this number includes all of that. Before going through and trimming any expenditures that we don't feel that we can, we can fund for next school year. So the budget gap is 5 million at a 0% increase with different iterations all the way up to the tax cap at 2, 2.58%. So even if we raise to the tax cap, we still have about 4.7, 4.8 budget gap. That's kind of it for this budget presentation. The next budget presentation and the next steps in the budget process include a really detailed review of our expenditure side of the budget, looking at our tax levy and our fund balance usage and discussing what you would feel comfortable raising the tax levy for next year, as well as how much in fund balance and reserves that you want to use to offset the budget gap. And then finally, looking to close that budget gap. And that's all I have. Any questions? Yes, yep. You would have to adopt a budget, which would include whatever tax increase up to the tax cap. If you wanted to go above the tax cap, you would need super majority from the community. We would be currently, right now with the budget gap, yes, we would be short. We could, we do not have enough revenue to offset our budget or our expenditures. We will have to go out for a vote in May.
Nope. Just part of the process. Well, I know, I know there's a bunch of asks in there. I know meetings are going on through it. We've been this, through this before as a board, but I think this is the biggest number we've seen as a board. So it's, you know, we got some work to do. Roll up the sleeves, figure something out. But Mrs. May, thanks for, for kind of going back and documenting the history of where taxes have been and what we've actually done for this community. I mean, we've actually, you know, like you said, left 1.9 million in their pocket. So, you know, if we've got to go out and ask for the 2.58, you know, we've got documentation showing that we've done our due diligence, the community's got to step up at, at some point in time. It kind of goes back to the last capital budget vote. You know, where one of it got passed, the other half didn't. I know we're working through those processes as well, too. So, you know, got some work to do. We've been, you know, this board's been together for a while now. We've been, been through this before. We'll work through it. So I got a question to all the students here. Thanks for, for coming out. It's early in the season to be showing up at this meeting. Any questions of us in regards to all these numbers? And you guys came to a good meeting to see what numbers look like. So. No, it's, there's, this is, this is the, this is the tough part about being on board is, you know, where we're headed and, and what we've got to do to make, you know, the budget for next year. So thanks so much. Thank you for keeping it on round numbers and not for the pennies. Thank you much.
Yep.
Nice job.
Have a quick question. I know we were talking about revenue and like what we get from when students come to our district, and this might be in the next one with our expenditures. Do we know, because I know we send some students out to other districts. How does that balance or is that for the next presentation? Like, I'm just curious what our expenditures are.
It'll be in the next presentation, once we get, once we do a deep dive on the expenditure side of the things.
Awesome, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
It, it seems that the whole electric bus thing comes up on almost every conversation. And I'm just wondering, is there someone, an expert telling the governor that in many districts, it just isn't going to work? It's, you can, is, do we, are we aware that there's a person who is actually saying, governor, in many, many districts, the buses that we have can't be electric? And, and the reason it's important from the budget process is that we have our bus purchases for 25. We have our butts purchases for 26. We normally buy one, two, three large buses and then we're done. I mean, and so we have potentially six buses to purchase that are diesel or gas, whatever they are. And then, then we're done. And then the manufacturers, I'm guessing, take years to ramp up. And so they're likely not making anything but electric buses at some point. And so there's got to be somebody who's telling the governor, you know, by the way, this can't work.
There's, there's actually somebodies, you need many people. I'm going to talk a little bit more about where we are with the zero emission busing plan, give you an update from our last Wendell report. And while we're only talking about buses right now in terms of purchasing, there's a lot more that goes into it in terms of building the infrastructure in the district, in terms of charging stations and fire suppression and, and so on. It is millions, it is millions, just to get started.
I did, just while we're on that topic, a few weeks ago, I had a long conversation with David Lowry, who is, is he the president? I don't even really understand what his title is, but he's ahead of it. Let's just say that. And one of the conversations that came up was what the Erie County Association of School Boards is doing to kind of advocate, I don't want to say against it, but for a more sensical approach to electric school buses. So I think like Jeff said, there's many peoples. Hopefully she listens.
So let's just recap where we are. And I just want to remind everyone that, that today's presentation is essentially a point in time presentation. In years past, when we would get the governor's run, it would be the worst case scenario. We would often be left wringing our hands and wondering how we were going to operate because the previous governor, that's the way, that's the way he operated. This particular governor has, has taken many of the aspects or some of the aspects of the Rockefeller Report, which has worked well for our district. The change in needy families and the measurement of needy families was a huge benefit to our district. But in saying that, that also tells us that we have a lot of needy families in our district and therefore our fiscal responsibility is even more important to pay attention to. So an increase in our base aid, our foundation aid of $452,000 is fantastic. I do not anticipate, unlike in previous, under previous leadership, I do not anticipate that getting better. Right? It could get better. We could get more foundation aid. We could get more expense-driven aids. It could get worse. And in fact, that did happen in previous years where, and it happened here, where the, where the, the number that we felt we, we were going to settle on actually come in, it came in a little bit less. So that's why I just want to remind you, this is a point in time, and that's why Mr. Sudfin pointed out that we, we go through this every year. This is usually the hardest meeting to, to really fathom because we're looking at our maximum amount of expenditures before we do any really hard scrubbing. Right? And, and what are those asked for? And I have to be honest with you, particularly at the building level, the asks are not out of line. You know, some of our biggest expenses next year are always special education. That's the way it is, particularly for those, those young people that we don't have the services within the district as much as try as we might. We have some significant expenses towards staff development, especially in regards to reading instruction, which is critically important, but not a crazy number. And we've got a couple of other things that are, you know, wish list items that we just smiled and, and let them put that on paper, and we'll talk about that at another time. So going forward, we need, we need to plan for the revenue as we see it. I agree with you about sales tax. It's, it's something that I've talked to the board a lot about in the past year about being very careful at not overestimating our sales tax because you don't know. And with the current climate in the country and the potential for significant tariffs, that could drive spending down. If spending goes down, our sales tax revenue goes down. So we've got to be, we've got to be cautious on, on that approach. You've done a great job with that so far. So keep that up. And then we've got to take a hard look at our expenditures. I'll reiterate what, what Mr. Sudfin said, what Ms. May said. We have undertaxed the community by 1.9 million, right? And I don't think that gets enough press. And I get it, I'm a taxpayer as well. I understand when your taxes go up, you, you don't like it, you're not happy, but very seldom do you get to celebrate. They actually asked for a lot less than they could have. And we will always do that when we can. In fact, on your slide, it showed a 0%. We, we stayed flat a number of years ago. That's because there was such an influx of federal money related to the pandemic and, and they, and we were told buy stuff. Well, how much stuff do we need? So let's offset our, our taxpayers' expense utilizing those federal funds. And, and, and we did. And it was the right thing to do, and we would do it every time we had the opportunity to do that. So you have a good seasoned board that's calm and understands where we are. So you're, you're blessed in that, in, in that area. So very nice job tonight. Thank you.
At this point during the meeting, are there any members of the Board of Ed that want to request any items removed from the consent agenda and considered separately? At this point during the meeting, are there any members of the Board of Ed that want to request any items removed from the consent agenda and considered separately? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is now the approximate position in time that the Board of Education is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status. For example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two minute time limit. Anyone?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's being recorded, so we need to hear you over the mic.
What kind of improvements should the student body be looking for in the increase in budget?
So this isn't a back and forth session. This is, this is your opportunity to tell us what kind of improvements you want to see.
Would the Chromebooks be able to be improved on? Because the current ones that the seniors have aren't too great.
We know. And they're on the schedule to be replaced. So we're actually required, and again, this isn't a back and forth. So I thank you for a little leeway.
Yeah.
So there's a, um, there, there's absolutely a plan to replace technology and so X number of years. We, I'm sorry, we did push your Chromebooks, uh, an extra year based on some budgetary constraints that we had last year.
So what you're saying is he's not going to see something really.
He, he's, um, hopefully he has some younger siblings who'll benefit from the new stuff, have the new Chromebooks.
You can say you advocated for that.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Um, the new business of resignations, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Patty Dallas be accepted effective January 31st, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of labor Dan Was be accepted effective February 14th, 2025. The board administration wished to thank Mr. Was for his five and a half years of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cleaner Nicholas Parisan be accepted effective January 31st, 2025. The board and administration wished to thank Mr. Parisan for his six years and of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Natalie Eggleston be accepted effective February 21st, 2025. The board and administration wished to thank Mrs., Ms. Eggleston for her four years of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of Colin Sparazza for the middle school, high school and musical adult musician be accepted effective February 12th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
New business appointments. But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Laura Hesman be permanently appointed as cafeteria monitor effective March 4th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Tina Seltz be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March 4th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Renz Jessica Turley McDonough be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March 4th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Billy Beck be permanently appointed as a senior clerk typist effective March 18th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mary Lynn McHugh be appointed as a temporary psychologist up to tenure, 10 years per week, 10 hours per week, effective February 13th, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. Salary is $30 per hour.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mary Tiber ski be appointed on probation as a bus attendant and a substitute cafeteria monitor effective February 24th, 2024 and ending September 24th, 2025. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step three.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Antoinette Backert be appointed as a school psychologist in the school psychologist tenure area effective March 17th, 2025 and ending March 17th, 2029. The expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section 3012 of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the psychologist must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to, pursuant to section 3012D of the educational law of either hot, effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the psychologist receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, psychologists shall not be eligible for tenure at the time. Salary is based upon ETA contract masters plus 30, step nine.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Isabella Hubert be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective February 27th, 2025 and ending August 27th, 2025. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
New business. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Boys and Girls Club request releasing school buses for their summer program be approved dependent upon the district's ability to secure drivers for these runs.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. That particular number, power lab vacuum pressure former. Uh, those four particular numbers assorted obsolete photography development equipment.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business reports?
I don't have anything off that.
Would you like to go again? Superintendent's report.
Okay. So I provided, uh, the board along with, in, in the public side of the agenda, a draft of next year's school calendar, the 25, 26 school year, school calendar for you to review and offer any comment either, either today or, or at another time. Uh, the, the calendar does include actually five, uh, uh, emergency closure days by a stroke of genius or dumb luck. We had five emergency closure days built into this year's calendar as well. And that's where we're at right now. We've had five, five closure days. I bring that up because there's some information out there that quite frankly is not fully understood yet regarding what happens if a state of emergency is called. The governor did declare a state of emergency, I believe on four of the five days we, we utilized. And there's some debate on whether that means those days count or not. Okay. Hopefully it doesn't matter and we, you know, although winter's been long and, and cold and icy and whatnot, hopefully we have a good run to the rest of the year and we don't have to have to cross a bridge that nobody understands at this point. Because the, the way the rule is written, and I think I've shared this with you before, it's governmental ease. So it's not really too easy to understand. If a emergency declaration is made and an attorney, uh, certifies that you had to be closed because of that emergency, you may be able to recoup that day. That would mean that, um, say we only had four, four days built in and we needed five. That would mean that when we go to apply for state ed, we would get back a day because of the emergency declaration and have the 180 days that we need for our full state, state ed allotment. State aid allotment, state ed, state, you're supposed to correct that. Our full aid allotment. The way next year's calendar, calendar falls, um, we have five days built in. We actually have a six that we could pull back very easily because I included an extra staff development day, uh, in March. And that is really done to support some of the training that needs to go on to support the, the reading, uh, the changes in reading that I mentioned earlier as well. The calendar that, uh, is proposed to you does start after Labor Day. The Western New York regional calendar, um, most, most schools will be starting their, their first student day, the day after Labor Day. Ours will be the Thursday of that week. Any questions on the calendar at this point?
Are there? Is our district able to do like two hour delays?
We can. Um, the problem with a two hour delay is and you've noticed a trend much to my dismay at times that, that schools are closing earlier and earlier and earlier. And I have no problem closing that the evening before because it gives families an opportunity to, to, to make adjustments. A two hour delay does not.
Right. Thanks.
Other questions?
This is just my ignorance. I know in the last year, two years, we've had two holidays to add to the calendar. Do we know any more?
Excellent question. And that's, that's, that's not ignorance. That's, that's concern. And, and I share that with you because one of the things that we didn't talk about is what's going to happen next in terms of the budget season i- is, is when the, the rest of the government officials start, we'll say debating and politicking for what they want included in the budget. And, and it could be additional holidays um, of whatever, whatever faith or i- is out there. That's one of the concerns that I have in building the calendar is there's a number of Jewish holidays that, that are not currently, we're not currently required to close school for. There's, there's Muslim holidays as well. There's rumors out there that they may be coming, but I don't know anything imminent. If that happens, I will have to retool this, this calendar. Absolutely. Any other questions? Well, if you, once you have some time to reflect on that calendar, if you have, have anything to, to bring back to me and any suggestions, I'm happy to make the, make adjustments. All right. So moving on, uh, Mr. Cuddey. Zero emission buses, the transition and where, and where we are. And where we are. Uh, we had a, a meeting with, uh, with Wendell, uh, a week or two ago. It's a preliminary report. And you'll recall Wendell is the firm that is doing an assessment of our district and, and the things that we would need to do to make a transition, uh, in terms of changes to our infrastructure and, and whatnot. What they presented on were just really, um, a, a very preliminary report and what we would need to do in terms of, uh, phasing in charging stations and fire suppression. And they, they, what they designed is charging stations for 30 buses. Currently we have 25 runs. And we learned from Mary Banco that 51% of our runs cannot be, uh, um, satisfied with an electric bus. Because of the, the length of the run and the time to recharge the bus and then go back out and, and, and bring the kids home. So that tells me that while we have 25 runs, we're probably going to need 40 buses. Roughly. Well, that, that's why we're, we're advocating against it. So the information they provided was for 30 charging stations. For the charging stations and the fire suppression equipment that is required would be a phasing cost of $7.4 million. Now, is there money out there to support the district? Yes. But it's still $7.4 million. And it also reflect on our current footprint for our transportation department. So the buses where they're parked right now, that's where they would be charged. And I asked the question. I said, well, everything we're hearing is they need to be 10 feet apart. And then the, the, you're gonna love this. The response was actually it's got, it's 14 feet apart. But if there's a fire, you just pull the other buses out of the way. All right. Okay. Okay. So there's a lot of questions there, right? Like, oh, that's our solution. Okay. And then they, and then they asked, and then, and then they asked, well, do you have more space? Like, weren't you on the campus? So anyway, I, I, I digress. What they had not done yet, and what we've asked them to do is to take a hard look at our transportation facility. And whether the bays are deep enough or tall enough or have the right lifts to support, um, uh, the work that will eventually need to be done on, on those buses. So the final report is about three months out. Yes, there's ongoing advocacy, um, to postpone the deadlines and, and actually let's take a more reasonable approach that rather than your entire fleet, let's examine, and this is my opinion, and I know some of our advocates share it. Let's examine our runs and figure out which can be supported with a zero emission bus. It's, I, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't have these at all, but like, I, I'm also saying there's no way our district can, it can make a full transition. Just, it's nonsensical. So we'll kill, we'll keep working forward in that area.
For this, it, it, the, the, the buses that they're saying are completely, you know, they're, they're, they're just, it's just not going to work for numerous reasons. The hybrids would seem to be a reasonable alternative.
I think they talked about hybrids when we had that one rep here and it just wasn't a viable solution for buses at this point. I can't remember what the rationale was, but
Hybrid's not zero emission.
Yeah. And they just, there's not a lot of them. I can't, he, he had a reasoning why there's not many hybrid buses made.
Oh, none of the hybrids could be zero emission?
No.
No?
No.
One second.
So I mean, I, you know, is it better? Is it, is it better to have a hybrid than, you know, a regular diesel bus in terms of admission? I would guess so. Um, is that on the table right now? It's not. And I, why or why not? I, I really can't answer. I, I don't know. I just know that 2027 is not too far away. I know that even a bus that we ordered, I think two years ago, we may have just received it or about to receive it. So the, um, the, the manufacturers are, are nowhere near in position to provide schools with as many electric buses as, as would be called for.
Can I just, this is more of a playing devil's, devil's advocate. Okay. Let's just say this all goes through. Has anybody talked like if, if we're doing our due diligence and trying to order these buses, but the order can't be filled? Is there like a no harm clause or?
I don't know. I mean, what if we do our due diligence and, and, and ask our community whether the support use of our transportation reserve to, to purchase an electric bus and they say no? And that's happened. You know, it happened in, it happened in Bemis Point where they had about two and a half million dollars in grants. And they needed anywhere, maybe $400,000 that they, they needed, uh, um, community approval, stakeholder approval to access those grants and it was voted down handily.
Syracuse had similar, similar vote outcomes where it got voted down. So here's, here's the whole thing. Um, the electric bu- or the diesel buses aren't going away. They're still making them for Pennsylvania. They're still making them from other states. So it's just our state. It's no different than the, um, plastic bag law. You go down to Erie, Pennsylvania, you get as many lines, wagmans. So just, I don't know, maybe the, maybe the loopholes we buy used buses moving forward.
There, you'd have to raise the roofs to, to get a, a electric bus in.
It's to be determined still where that study hasn't been completed yet, but that'll be in the final study.
Yeah, I think that's the issue also. I think that the whole idea i- is just wrong.
So just a couple, I'll, I'll So just a couple, a couple other small items, while not small items, important items, but you know, the board is aware that I, along with a number of other superintendents in the area, I signed a a letter to the governor regarding the uh essentially the, what are, what do they call it, the distraction free environment? Is that how you put, uh, distraction free learning, uh, which is essentially a ban on cell phones? And we asked for more local control in that area that not every school and is having the same issues as as some schools are. Personally, I don't think things should be legislated from the state. That should be our responsibility. Um, so, you know, I'm hopeful. Uh, I think that particularly in Eden, do I, do I think our, our students are on their cell phones too much? I'm sure, I'm sure they are. I'm sure adults are on their cell phones too much, right? Um, but let it, let us work with, let us work with our young people about time and place and proper use and so on and so forth and 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 making a teachable moment rather than a uh, a legislative moment. You're welcome. And finally, and this is really good news, I think our students will agree um about this teacher who is being recognized, but I did get a letter on February first from the New York State Technology and Engineering Education Educators Association. Um, and it says in part, um, let me see, there was the pertinent part here. As coordinator of the New York State Technology Education Engineering Association Awards Committee, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that Mr. Stephen Jones, a technology education teacher in your district's middle and high school, has been chosen as regional teacher of the year by his colleagues from the Western New York Technology Education Educators Association. Uh, there'll be an award ceremony and a banquet to honor uh Mr. Jones along with others in, um, where the heck is it? On March thirteenth. So congratulations to Mr. Jones. I did send him an email congratulating him, and I said before he had a chance to, knowing what a, what a humble person he is, that he very likely would give uh credit to his students and his colleagues and and his administration, and I was correct, he did. Um, but he's a real, uh, geez, he's a real, he's a real, real jewel for this district as, as is that whole department. So students, if you haven't heard anything yet tonight, hear this, that when you see Mr. Jones tomorrow, you congratulate him. And if he says, how did you know, let him know that I told you. Sure is, sure is. That's all I have. Anything for me?
Nope.
We have a student here, student report.
Hello, my name is Thomas Rasmus, and I'm here with the High School Student Council to go over the events from January and February. Uh, starting in January, we had the route, red ribbon, red ribbon week from the sixth to the tenth. Uh, it focused on the escaping, uh, kids escaping drugs. Uh, there was a assembly with grades six through eight and then ninth through twelfth right after. Uh, for the week, Monday, we did the socket to the drugs where we would wear mismatch socks with Crocs. On the seventh, we would do War on Drugs Day, which was where you would wear camo clothes. On Wednesday, the eighth, it was give the boots to drugs, just wear boots to school. On the ninth, there was the Team Up Against Drugs where you would wear your team spirit clothing, and then on the tenth, it was wear all red. Uh, that, also, on the, on the third of January, there was the Middle School New Year's Ball. And for the Arctic Raiders race in December, Ms. Koenig and her team won. Moving on to February, the, there was the Middle School Literacy Night early on on the fourth from six P M. to eight P M. I attended, it was quite fun. Um, many high school uh students would be there volunteering and running events. On the sixth, uh, there is the Just Say Hello February meeting um where kids would make book page flowers and decorate picture frames, and there were snacks and drinks to share. Uh, currently, it's the Be Kind Week this uh week with uh Middle School and High School Student Councils and the Middle School and High School National Honor Society and you, uh, Unified Club participating. On Monday, it was the Make a Change Monday and Wild About Kindness where you'd just wear animal print clothing and you'd just give a compliment to all your students, fellow students. On Tuesday, there was Make the World a Sweet Place. The Middle School National Honor Society handed out sweets during the lunches. On Wednesday, uh, today, there was uh Be Kind Bingo, and homeroom kids were given sheets and a bingo board. When you have achieved a bingo, uh, Ms. Doctor would hand out special prizes to all the kids. Tomorrow is going to be Thankful Thursday. Uh, you, the Unified Club will be outside the cafeteria during all lunches, and you could write little notes to a friend or classmate or teacher and give it to them. Friday, there's going to be Feel the Love Friday. Uh, you'd wear red and pink. And the High School National Honor Society is participating in that. All lunch periods will be outside the cafeteria similar to the Unified Club, and you could write a note or kind word of affirmation and pin it to the wall for all to see. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sounds good. Next, we have the Board Report Roundtable. Or Rectangular Table.
I'd like to welcome Amanda Pacinski to her first uh full district clerk uh board meeting. Congratulations. Twenty-four years of having Barb sitting in that chair, it's did a good job. And uh, just the other thing, only other thing, um, uh, myself, uh, Ms. Gregory and Mr. Sortissio attended a regionalization meeting with Bosse's. Uh, we kind of talked about shared services and busing issues, so. Yeah, so kinda, I don't know. Kind of came up with an idea. If we got to build a new bus garage, we're going to build it between here and North Collins and share it, so, and Bosse's is going to run it, so. That was what we proposed to them. Whether that happens will be another thing, but um, just looking at some other shared services that, you know, with surrounding districts, what we might be able to do, so, um, that was kind of the two topics and I think the next one's slated for end of the month here, twenty-seventh. So stuff happening there. That's all I got. Anything else? All right, Cheryl.
That's it. All right. The next regular meeting of a, the next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six P M. in the Middle School High School Library. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody. We're done in an hour.
Thank you.